I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council and Public Financing Authority. City Clerk may have a roll call, please.
Councilman Twining?
Here.
Councilman Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Proton McKeon?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Here.
Councilman Gruel?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
All present.
Okay, tonight's invocation we give by Huntington Beach Police Chaplain James Pike.
Those who have voted today, oh Lord, bless those who will vote, including those who have been elected to lead our city on this dais. May you give them wisdom for the business that comes before them tonight. In this season of Thanksgiving, we look to you, the source of all goodness, the man of old giver of blessings, and we pray that in our gratitude, we find a way to draw closer to one another, heal old wounds, recover old friendships, take care of those in need as befits so great a people, and we ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Next week will be Veterans Day, so in recognition of that Chad Williams will lead the flag salute.
All right, please join me as we pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, City Attorney, do you have anything to?
Not tonight, Mayor.
Report nothing. All right, City Council member comments, Chad.
All right, so in recognition of Veterans Day, just to kind of pay homage to those that have served and are currently serving, penned into history in our Declaration of Independence, those famous words, "The pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness." And I fear that happiness nowadays no longer really means what it meant when those words were originally penned. You know, to the original authors and those that were before them, even the ancients, it meant living a life of wisdom and virtue. It meant about, it was about living a life towards something that was bigger and greater than the self. And nowadays, we're living in what you could sort of call a selfie generation. It's more inward, and one of the ways that you know that is the happy life these days is if you're trying to figure out if somebody's happy, you ask them, "How do you feel?", so it's about personal feelings. And so we are currently in this sort of selfie generation, but those that are serving and have served really are a look at a reflection of the greatest generation that has gone before us. These are people that are willing to answer the call and really sacrifice self, give up, you know, their own desires, their own wants, and they're willing to answer the nation's call, you know, to defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic. It's a life towards something bigger and greater than self. It's a, it's a life that esteems to, you know, seek after the needs of others is greater than their own. So I was thinking about Theodore Roosevelt's "Man in the Arena", and this is kind of an homage to, you know, those that have served and currently served. I think that the man in the arena really depicts who they are, and so it goes like this. It says, "It's not the critic that counts, it's not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred with dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there is no effort without error or shortcoming, but who strives to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and who spends himself on a worthy cause, and who in the end, at the best, knows the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least he fails while daring greatly, so that his place will never be among those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." I really do think that those who have served and currently serving are really a manifestation of those words, and so as, you know, representatives of Huntington Beach, we just want to say we thank those who have served and are currently serving, and we thank the families, as we realize this is a sacrifice for them as well.
Andrew.
Thank you, Chad. On, let's see, Monday, sorry, on Monday, November 10th, we are hosting through an organization, Save the Brave, which is a wonderful organization that is dedicated to providing veterans with offshore fishing trips. We're having our 250th United States Marine Corps birthday, huge Veterans Day bash at the, at Sea Legs at the beach in Huntington Beach, right on the sand. It's going to be a ceremonial cake cutting featuring the oldest and the youngest Marine, Commandments Birthday Message, live music on the beach, color guard, veteran vendors, beer garden, and food. It's a 21-plus event, vendor and sponsorship opportunities, there's still a couple available. You can get your tickets online at www.SavetheBrave.org, it's under upcoming events. I highly recommend everybody come out, it's going to be a great day, and we can celebrate all of our wonderful veterans.
Grace.
I just wanted to say we had a wonderful, I don't know, what do we call it, Halloween celebration downtown, the 30th. It's probably the most packed one I've ever seen. We had the most people join the Halloween costume contents that we've ever had, which made our jobs much more difficult. I think it was Butch Twining, Pat, and myself were judges, and it went really smooth. We even had a dog competition, so next year be ready, get your costumes ready for your pets. Oh, and we had a bunny, Bunny won first.
Animal competition.
Animal competition, doesn't matter what animal, we won't discriminate. So bring your pets, bring your costumes, and it's actually was a really, really fun event. And thank you for our police, our fire that went out there, make sure everybody was safe and the event was successful.
I participated in a pretty cool ceremony today, it was kind of a pre-Veterans' Day veterans ceremony at Golden West College in the Quad area, they had some veterans there, it was very nice. And I just want to remind everybody, November 11th at Pier Plaza, starting at 11 o'clock, they're going to have a Veterans' Day ceremony. I believe it's put on by Post 133, and it's usually a very good turnout and a very awesome event. So please come if you can, anybody else? Butch, Butch has a lot to say.
I too, just like my counterpart Chad said, I want to, I want to thank all, excuse me, all of our veterans, active-duty personnel, all those that are serving overseas, while we enjoy the freedoms they provide for us here in Huntington Beach. So thank you, veterans. I also want to just talk about one thing that Gracie said, and as she mentioned, Pat, her and myself, were judges for the costume contest down on downtown Main Street on Halloween, and it was packed. It, it's as crowded as I've ever seen downtown, and it was very tough being judge, judges because we had dozens and dozens of small children that were, that were so cute, that, but we could only pick three winners out of about 40 people, and it was just.
That was brutal.
Broke my heart, that some people didn't get, didn't win the contest, but it was really, really good, and all of the retailers down there were totally into the, into the, the event, and I look forward to being able to do it again next year, so thank you. I believe that was.
Case.
D-bid, right? So, thank you.
Yeah, also, of course, want to acknowledge and thank our veterans for their sacrifice for our country. Everything flows off of them, there's, you know, what they've, them, their family, everything, all their sacrifices to defend our country, to give us the freedom and liberty that we enjoy every single day. And without that, nothing, nothing, you know, operates, there's no, you know, happiness. Our businesses aren't successful, you know, our streets aren't clean, so that is the foundation that everything rests upon. So I just want to thank them and honor them today and obviously every day, but especially next Tuesday for Veterans' Day, so thank you.
Don.
We're clearly giving thanks to the veterans a week early because we don't have a session next week. We do have down there at Pier, Pier Plaza, but I'm very grateful for the veterans that give us the freedom. Freedom is not free, those who put their life on the line to defend our freedoms are the true heroes of the United States of America, and God bless those veterans.
All right, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, we have supplemental communications. On the consent calendar, item number five, two emails received. On the consent calendar, item number eight, one email received. Ordinances for introduction, item number 10, revised PowerPoint received regarding the introduction of ordinance number 4343, adopting the 2025 Model California Construction Codes and scheduling a public hearing for December 16th, 2025. Item number 11, one email received. Councilmember items, number 12, one email received.
All right, thank you.
And Mayor, I have one item.
Okay.
Before the public comment.
All right.
My staff would like to pull number five, the Memorandum of Understanding with the Art League of Huntington Beach, and we'll bring it back to the City Council on a future date.
Okay, thank you, so five's out. All right, City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have 10 people signed up to speak.
Whoa, all right. Proper decorum at the City Council meeting is imperative in order for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the City Council's business will not be tolerated. California Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting, and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. At this time, City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form, delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly to a council member on any item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@servecity-hb.org. City Clerk, please call the speakers, and we'll give them each two minutes.
When your name is called, please come down to the podium, please use both podiums. Mr. Amory Hanson, Ron Duplantis, Charles Jackson, Nadia Sacher, Jason Seraphin, Sean Rosliya, Heather Jennings, Victor Chaffa, Russ Neal, Eddie Osborne, and Kane Durham.
Yeah, if you plan to speak, you might as well go down because that's the only call for speakers. All right, sir, please. Oh no, step right up, you're it, thank you.
My name is Ron Duplantis. I've been a citizen of Huntington Beach for about 26 years now. For starters, I want to clarify politically, I am a moderate independent, okay? I'm not a Republican nor a Democrat. I'm here to inform, really, the citizens of Huntington Beach behind me. It's a fact that for centuries, local politics was always non-partisan. Cities and towns didn't allow candidates to display D's or R's behind their names on the ballot. Winners of those elections worked on local issues, repairing city streets, sewer systems, public safety, police, fire departments. But in recent years, this national party system has corrupted our local politics. Now it's all about polarizing culture wars and wasting our tax dollars in the process. My question is, why don't you just do your job? I know because, like, one of you up on the dice tonight is running for state assembly, you see the City Council seat as a stepping stone up in this partisan, polarized, two-party nightmare we live in. So instead of doing the job of a city council, what are you doing? Well, you're into voter ID, you're into California sanctuary laws, no masks and no vaccine mandates, a ban on pride flags on public property, trying to turn a traditional public institution, libraries, into a private company. And how much did you spend on that MAGA library plaque, really? This culture war we see that spreads far and wide across the country, we're not unique here, you're wasting our money doing that when you should be fixing.
All right, thank you.
Sir, can you fill the, sir, sir, can you fill out a blue card over there? I'd like to, I'd like to fill out a blue card.
Sergeant at Arms.
Sergeant at Arms, please, I'd like to reach out to you to meet. Yeah, thanks.
Next speakers, sir, please step up the mic.
To the honorable members of Huntington Beach City Council, thank you for your time. My name is Jason Seraphin, this is my daughter Hannah Seraphin. We'd like to present you with a wonderful idea as well as a wonderful business opportunity for the city. We innovatively request for the installation of public kiosks to be used as water and beverage sales hydration stations at designated areas along the beach boardwalk, bike trail. Currently, there are no facilities to buy water or beverages along several miles of the beach boardwalk. There are also no beverage dispensing vending machines. This is a year-round heavily trafficked path used by beachgoers, tourists, cyclists, joggers, walkers, and more. In fact, during the off-season, almost all the permanent food and beverage locations on the boardwalk closed for the season, leaving a barren landscape for anyone thirsty at the beach or along the trail. This results in confusion and discomfort for visitors when they realize they may need to walk a mile or more to buy a water or beverage, as well as miss opportunities for local and city partnered businesses. We advocate for the installation of multiple kiosks in city-approved locations along the beach boardwalk that would provide the year-round sales of water and other beverages. The kiosk would be called HB Hydration Stations and will serve as practical locations for beachgoers to stay hydrated. The establishment of these kiosks aligns with the city's goals of enhancing beachgoers and tourist experience and enhancing public safety by ensuring there are locations for visitors and the public to stay hydrated. It represents an innovative solution to meet the evolving needs of our community, visitors, and ever-growing heavily trafficked beach boardwalk. We kindly request that you consider our proposal and provide guidance on the necessary permits and approval processes, as well as the city's interests for joint venture of part.
All right, thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Charlie Jackson, a 24-year resident of Huntington Beach. I attended the recent constitutional classes to understand the Christian nationalist worldview, that is to say, to understand the defective foundation for catastrophic policies that we see daily. I was there to learn a different viewpoint, and I did not interrupt the class. I was only able to attend three of seven classes due to my travel schedule. The talks are clearly skewed toward a Christian national worldview, but they are not specifically partisan. However, on October 15th, when a partisan crony spoke for almost 15 minutes on how to canvas for No on 50 and how to get petitions signed for the voter ID petition, a line was crossed. It reminded me of stories I've heard about Soviet-Russian local committee meetings. Please make sure that future Huntington Beach celebration and education events do not have flagrant violations of partisan politics, thank you.
Thank you for the information, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Heather Gro Jennings, a lifelong resident of Huntington Beach, and I'm here to share some exciting news and heartfelt enthusiasm for something truly special coming to our city, the Light the World Giving Machines at the Huntington Beach Pier this holiday season. For two weeks, starting Thanksgiving Day, our pier, already one of the most iconic spots in Southern California, will become a place not only for sunsets and surf, but for service and giving. The Giving Machines are unique red vending machines where, instead of buying a snack or a drink, people can purchase items for those in need, things like meals for families, comfort items for children in the hospital, and much more. People can choose to give to international charitable partners or keep their giving local. What makes this especially meaningful is that donations go directly to local charities, making a real impact right here in our community. Organizations like the Boys and Girls Club, Chalk Children's Hospital, and the Orange County Food Bank. These are groups that serve our neighbors, our friends, and our kids every single day. The Light the World Giving Machines remind us what the holidays are truly about, coming together, lifting others, and lighting the world through small acts of kindness. They create an experience where giving becomes joyful, visible, and contagious. I can't think of a more fitting place for the spirit of generosity than Huntington Beach, a community that already shines so brightly through service, compassion, and connection. So thank you for welcoming the Giving Machines to our pier. I'm confident that they'll bring not just light to our holidays, but hope to many hearts, thank you.
Next speaker.
Mayor, City Council, and friends. My name is Victor Kawa, and I've been a resident of Huntington Beach since 1984, when I migrated from Peru. I have been involved in many projects that allow us to serve the community, and as Heather was explaining, we have the great opportunity for the third year to be participants of the Giving Machine here in Huntington Beach. We appreciate the city helping us out, and we're here to request a few, a few things if you, if you may consider. In the past, we have had the Golden West TVs, actually. In the past, we have had Golden West TVs actually promote our local service projects, and we would like to see if it might be a possibility that you guys would allow it or at least think about helping us out promote this, since, like Heather said, all the proceeds that are going from the Giving Machine are really impacting our local community. At one point or another, I'm sure there was a citizen or a resident of our city that has been helped, especially this year, we're honored to have the Food Bank, who serves a lot of our community, and we really appreciate it. We invite each one of you and also our local community to be able to participate and be part of this great opportunity to serve. And with my last 20 seconds, I, we're also, are also prepping up for next year's our Service Day, which will be on April 25th, and we're trying to have about 50 projects that will be impacting our local community, and we invite each one of you to continue to support us and participate. Thank you so much, and if you have any questions, or if we can put any of these signs on the city building, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Sir, don't you have an event coming up? Did you say December 2nd?
Yes, yes, we have.
Real quick.
Yes, we have, this is given day is December 2nd, and we're gonna have a lot of the local channels that are gonna be there, and we invite each one of you to come in.
At the pier, at what time?
At the pier at 10 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. My name is Nadia, and lady that is spending the rest of my life helping in anything I can with the vulnerable homeless people. I'm here because I brought a gentleman with me. He's 72 years old, has many illnesses. He's been unhoused for six years. I was able to help him to be on a program that just terminated on the 20th. So he's living in the car right, was living in the car, but it was because of the generosity of Pastor Pike from the Lutheran Church that put him in a hotel for just a short time, and we're very grateful for that. I'm here to see if there's any program that can help this gentleman get into a program that he can have permanent housing. You know, he, because of his illnesses, including open heart surgery, he cannot be in a congregated shelter. He'll land in the hospital right away. So he has to be in a shelter, a homeless program that is not that congregated. Even the shelter bed, he's not able to get down or get up because of the terrible back pains that he has. So if there's anybody, any of you that can help me to see if I can help him to get into a program that can finally put him into a permanent housing, he deserves it, he's a good gentleman, great record, kind man, so I'm here for that. So if, if anybody can refer me to talk to any of you, it would be so good.
Yeah, could you please fill out a blue card, and we'll have somebody from our homeless task force reach out to him and see what resources are available.
Reach out to him or you, or both of you.
And one last thing, I heard that you guys have a couple of hotels, motels, that probably will be refurbished to be like permanent supporting housing, that you guys assist people in his condition. I'm not sure which one they are, but if there's anything.
All right, ma'am.
Fill out the card with both of your contact info, and then we'll be reaching out to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, friends. My name is Sean. I'm a longtime resident and a former city council candidate way back in 2010. Let me start by giving a shout-out to the courts for stopping the voter ID law that the city has tried to implement. Looks like you guys will have to try a little harder to undermine American democracy. Seriously, though, I'm actually here to thank you for the TEFRA vote. I'm gonna keep it real for just one second, though, the fact that a non-controversial TEFRA vote for homeless seniors split you guys down the middle shows how low the bar is for leadership and accountability in the city. It's basically on the floor. That said, a few of you are willing to begrudgingly do the right thing if there is literally no reason not to. And so with that, Butch, I do want to thank you for your vote. I feel like you made some very reasonable and factual points at that special meeting. I feel like I saw maybe a little bit of actual compassion for the citizenry, and that was really refreshing. Thank you. Dawn, get over yourself. Casey, the arguments that you made were very to the point and solid. I want to thank you for your vote. Pat, you voted against the TEFRA because you said you were worried about socialism, and that's a really weird thing to say for a TEFRA vote. Gracie, thank you for your vote. Andrew, after that Fox interview, I didn't think you had much of a heart, but apparently you do have the ability to be reasonable, so thank you for your vote. And Chad, in the special meeting, you admitted that you were just running on pure ideology. And I just want to say, the point of ideology is to help clarify the real situations that we're in, not just to be a cloud of miasma that you can't see past. Thank you.
Hey, Sean, feel free to fill out a blue card. We can get together.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of Iam 12, Councilman Gruel, Twining, and Williams' item to continue advocating for pedestrian and cycling projects and funding. This item will allow Huntington Beach to expand and improve its infrastructure. Let's ensure transportation and infrastructure is available to all Huntingtonians. Once again, Ira J., yes vote on Iam 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Okay, thank you. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. It is not President Trump, but Governor Newsom, who is acting like a king by partisan gerrymandering, overriding local control, attacking the family, filling the courts with partisan hacks, invoking endless emergency powers, and consolidating all power in his hands. This council's fight is that of resisting the rise of an actual king in California, and for this, the No Kings people oppose you. I support your fight with the state and wish you success. Do not let anything dissuade you. In the words of John Adams, "We have no king but Jesus." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Last city council meeting, we had several people that slandered our city council members and our President Trump, so I thought it'd be really important tonight to set the record straight. For the last nine months, we've had the most productive president in the history of our country. The cost of a barrel of oil went from $52, from, it's down to $52 from $81. Gas prices are at a six-year low. Nationally, the average is $2.90. Inflation's gone down significantly, it's now 2.5%. Real wages are up $1,500. Egg prices have gone down 86% since January. Wall Street hit another all-time high last week. There's been over $21 trillion in foreign investment to secure U.S. domestic manufacturing here in the United States. We had the biggest tax cut in the history of our country with the big, beautiful bill, which means we'll have no tax on tips, we'll have no tax on overtime, and it eliminates a 68% tax increase. Doge program saved about $200 billion in government waste. Washington DC's crime is at all-time low right now. And then when you look at foreign policy, President Trump has met more foreign leaders in the last 10 months than Biden met in four years. He just met with the premier in China last week to resolve tariffs, fentanyl manufacturing, rare earth minerals, and also agricultural trade, where he's now, where the soybeans are being purchased from our farmers. We also destroyed the Iranian nuclear facilities in 30 hours at no losses to United States aircraft. You contrast that with Obama, who bombed seven countries and dropped over 26,000 bombs, and he gave pallets of money to the Iranians. Israel and Iran, that war is essentially over with. He, from a, from a world peace perspective, he's solved eight different wars around the world. All the NATO countries have now, are now investing 5% of their GNP. He still worked on Russia and Ukraine, which is a difficult issue, but he secured the border. It's the most secured border in the history of our country.
All right, thank you.
And we'll continue next time.
Next speaker, please.
All right, hello. My name is Eddie. I've been a, is this on right?
Yeah.
I've been a long-term, a longtime resident of the city, and just to start, I wanted to thank Councilman Williams for his sentiment expressed about our veterans. I, I wasn't here for the first portion, so I hope that those of you who didn't speak alongside him had already previously expressed such a deep sentiment for our boys and our The point I'm here today for is just to request a, maybe a reinvestigation of what happened with the oil spill and the litigation that was settled in 2023. According to my brief research, the Amplify Energy Corporation had settled and had agreed to give Huntington Beach $5.25 million, but the settlement was signed in May of '23. I'll be submitting FOIA requests to see where that money has gone, but I am curious as to how that more recent settlement plays into the figures that we agreed to pay to, who was it? Elliott. Kevin Elliott of Code Four. Besides the fact that I don't think it's a city issue, it's probably a county or state issue, we decided to pay out, what, like 3.7 million in total now? So obviously, it's pennies in the bucket, but it adds up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm gonna use my time today to provide information about some of the food resources available in Huntington Beach. Huntington Gardens at 18765 Florida Street has a food bank for seniors from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. St. Bonaventure Church at 16400 Springdale Street has a food bank from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The Boys and Girls Club at 17261 Oak Lane has food available for children from 3:15 to 3:45 Monday, Monday through Friday. Golden West College's The Stand is available for food distribution every weekday from 8:00 to 5:00. CommunitDad has a weekly food bank in the Ocean View District, and you can contact CommunitDad or Protect HB for details. Jamboree Housing at 18191 Park Tree Circle has food for seniors every third, every third Thursday, 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. Community United Methodist at 6652 Hyle has food 12 to 2 every Friday. Mariners Church at 7822 Warner has food every first and third Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. Calico Fish House at 16600 PCH has free meals from 4:00 to 8:00 every Monday. OC GapNet has Thanksgiving baskets for delivery. They're a trans organization, but you don't need to be trans to get a basket. You can find them on Instagram. Oakview Elementary at 17241 Oak Lane has food every second Wednesday from 9:45 to 10:45. Refuge Calvary Chapel at 7800 Edinger has food Monday and Tuesday, 2:00 to 3:00. And you can feel free to reach out to Pride of the Pier on social media for the full list. We must support our community in these times. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Noor. Here we go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You know, I really want to mention great places to go over here in Huntington, Huntington Beach, such as like Oktoberfest over at, bread crush from Costco, but there's last week to go, it's next week, so show up there. I mean, there's great, there's great, there's great professionals that take care of you, even pet professionals, like the Pet Vet, who's awesome, who's behind Adams and somewhere else, Adams and Beach. I mean, really great places. I mean, and really, I'm really proud to be here, but there's a few things that are really dangerous to our republic, not democracy, it's a republic, okay? And a republic, there's a lot of, you have, you have your own rights and you have your own freedoms, and that's what we are. If you play, do the pledge, it's a republic, not a democracy, okay? So you don't have to be punished for stupid things. I mean, if somebody's harmed, you take care of it. Now, this two-minute, first of all, the two-minute thing, you gotta stop. Nobody knows if it's two minutes or three minutes, Pat, or one minute. I mean, we took the time to drive all the way over here, I mean, 25 minutes to get over here, 25 minutes to get back home. We have the courtesy, guys, to take the three minutes like you're supposed to. It's part of our charter. Actually, if you want to be technical about it, you have another three minutes for every single issue we're allowed to speak about. We let you slide about that. So be polite to us, okay? And then please, I mean, it's only gracious, and it's only fair. And if you think it's opposite, or I mean, if you think I'm wrong, please address me anytime in public and yell at me, and I will admit in public that I was incorrect. But this isn't fair, and also for the clowns that we have, the police. Hey, listen, right now, they're being run by a guy that was, that was, that was, who had, okay, who had to resign, who had to resign from the Sheriff's Department with about five, with seven other, with seven other higher-ups. He was right below Tanaka. Eric Para, he was right below Tanaka.
All right, Raj. Thank you. Any other speakers? Please, more, more. I think that does it. So council members, do you have any city council committee appointment announcements? Seeing none. AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Openness and negotiation disclosures, does anyone have anything to disclose? Seeing none. Okay, now we have a study session. Come on down, Archer. Archer Aviation Incorporated presentation opportunity with Federal Aviation Administration for Electrical Vertical Takeoff and Landing Advanced Air Mobility Aircraft Integration Pilot Program. Staff, do we have any, or is it just Archer?
It is just Archer, but I just wanted to share with the city council and the community, this is in a study session to, to provide information to the public and to allow questions and answers during this time. There's no specific action item on this item tonight, and if the council would like us to move forward, we'd bring that back to you in the future. And tonight, we have George Kevork with Archer Aviation, as well as Melissa McCaffrey here to provide a presentation on this opportunity.
All right, George. I think you're the opening act.
... present to you. Ah, there I am. Thank you, in case you didn't hear me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll step back a little bit. Just thought we would spend a couple of minutes just introducing ourselves, our company, what we're doing, and why it's relevant for this body, and then we'll hand it off to my colleague to talk about the programs we're working on and the integration opportunity for the federal government and the opportunity to lead here in Huntington Beach. So Archer Aviation, we are an electric aircraft technology company. We are a 1,200-person-strong, California-based company. Well, no worries. And again, George Kevork with Archer, I am the general manager for Southern California and looking to bring this aircraft to operation in the community. So we've got about 1,200 employees as a California-based company, looking to expand our network as we come into congested urban city cores and networks. We're building the next generation of aviation technology, and what you're seeing here on the screen is the actual aircraft that we have developed. The aircraft is 100 times quieter than a helicopter. What that means is if you can hear the helicopter taking off from City Hall for about 100 blocks, you will hear this aircraft for only one block. Has incredibly redundant systems to make it safe, so in terms of the wiring of that aircraft, in terms of the propellers, the inverters, the motors, it is an incredibly safe aircraft designed to, to be able to operate, again, not necessarily with all of those, but in terms of a worst-case scenario, has the ability to glide like a traditional, traditional aircraft. So we're here today to talk to you because Huntington Beach is at the forefront, both of innovative and implementing technology, but also because it has a rich aviation history. And we would like to explore the opportunity to bring this zero-emission, all-electric aircraft to this market, to this community. What we have built, I think on the next slide, we'll reiterate, is a four-passenger aircraft, which is piloted, goes 150 miles an hour top speed, and the range target is 100 miles. But the idea is to utilize this for short hops within cities, for legs that should be taking you half an hour but are now taking upwards of an hour, such as getting from here to LAX or getting from here to Long Beach, and you're being able to take advantage of the ability to use this aircraft for those sort of short hops and short legs in 15 minutes. And ultimately, why is this important that we continue to refer to this as an aircraft? Is because this is going to operate within the existing airspace. This aircraft is going to be coming to the market. Unlike your scooters and bikes that just showed up, this will be with the FAA, working closely as we have been for the last several years to certify this aircraft, to make sure it's safe for travel, the same way your traditional aircraft, if not more rigorously, that is currently undergoing for aviation, and ultimately bring this plane into the operation, once it's certified, to operate with existing airspace rules, to operate as an existing airplane or aircraft rules. And what is the benefit that this brings? Unlike a helicopter, you are not dealing with that same sort of fuel, fuel costs, you're not dealing with the maintenance costs for several months of downtime, you're not dealing with the noise. with the noise and the pollution that comes along with that. And additionally, because of those services, we're able to deliver an aircraft that eventually will be the cost of an Uber Black, once you're scaled up, so getting you about $6, $7 a mile, so you can imagine those sort of 10, 15-mile legs, being able to take those for $70, $80, four passengers at a time, that's the ultimate goal. And again, the benefit is both in terms of the ability to take off like a traditional helicopter, for the propellers to transition on the wings, and fly like a traditional aircraft. I think the next slide will show you, oh, the next slide will show you how we're actually building some of the technology here in Huntington Beach. We purchased a 60,000-square-foot R&amp;D facility where we're working on the core composites and fabrication of this material. The aircraft is incredibly light, it's as light as a Model 3 Tesla, takes about the same charging capacity, so you can plug and play this on top of a parking deck, on top of a roof deck, with very minimal infrastructure or rehabilitation necessary. And the next slide will show you how we are currently in the test pilot phase. This is again within the FAA process to get us up to certification, so that we know that these aircraft are operational within the FAA terms. And again, these are not drones, they'll be flying at 1,500-plus feet, we're going to get up there and get high and get fast, and that way it's more efficient on the energy, on the battery, and ultimately get you to your location faster, and again, not flying low, low-dense populations. And the last thing I think that we'll mention is the network that we've announced so far as the official Olympic sponsor, Air Taxi, we've identified locations where we can currently take off and land and are building existing facilities with some of our partners that we've announced, such as USC, the Rams SoFi Stadium, as well as Clay Lacy at Santa Ana. But ultimately, we'd like to expand this network and figure out a mechanism to explore where Huntington Beach can plug into this, and that's where I'll hand it off to my colleague to talk about the federal leadership and how this can present an opportunity for us to expand.
All right, it works. Thank you, George. As mentioned, I'm Melissa McCaffrey, I had Archer's Policy and Government Affairs efforts and proudly a resident of Orange County. So in June, and if you want to just, there you go. In June, President Trump signed an executive order titled "Unleashing American Drone Dominance", and this really covered not just drones, but also advanced air mobility within a section of that actual, the language. And what that really means is this program allows for cities like Huntington Beach to be on the forefront of this new technology, as George mentioned, that is extremely quiet, safe, and sustainable, a lot of the issues that we hear locally in the community around airports and concerns with helicopters. And we can scroll to the next. And just a little bit more context on what was driving the creation of this program and the opportunity. The FAA, DOT, and the White House were coming together at the beginning of this administration, and were really looking on how we highlight American technology in the aviation sector. So part of the program, the goal is to accelerate this program, bring it into the national airspace system. It specifically allows US-based applicants to partner with a local municipality, in this case, it would be the city of Huntington Beach, representing the local community interests. Of course, on the manufacturer side, Archer would be doing technical diligence on lots of different components that would make this successful in the city in the future, including routes, charging infrastructure, and certainly a huge part of that is public engagement and acceptance to ensure that we are lockstep with the community in the effort that we're trying to do. So importantly, the timeline for this project is December 11th, the actual responses to the RFP, which will basically solicit projects from across the country. There will be five that would be actually selected in the March timeframe, and so we are, you know, competing with other cities. We, like George talked about, we have, you know, roots here in Huntington Beach, and so we really want to lean in on the incredible things that are done in the city, the technical revolution that I think can bring a lot of jobs and opportunity as a result of our aircraft operating here. And so there's a lot of really amazing things that can come out of this three-year program. So we really appreciate the opportunity to showcase this technology and the idea of this program to you today, and look forward to any questions and further opportunity to engage. I guess we can, we kind of already touched on that part as well, but additionally, I think if anybody has any questions, we welcome them and happy to continue the conversation in the future.
Could you guys perhaps speak, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Got the look from Mayor, so I wasn't. Could you guys speak a little bit more to the potential economic benefit, the development, you know, for our city in terms of like job creation and business partnerships that you might be attracting? As you mentioned, we do have a long history of aerospace here in Huntington Beach, from McDonnell Douglas to Boeing and so many more yourselves, so maybe just like a long-term potential look at what that looks like as far as job creations and capital investment goes?
Sure, I'll start on that. Thank you for the question. So I think we definitely feel that there is a revolution in the state of California to not just have the tech sector be in Silicon Valley, and it's exciting to see that growth in Orange County and in Huntington Beach. So it was very obvious to us when we were looking for places to do this specific type of manufacturing, that Huntington Beach was a great fit. To answer your question, I think long-term, there's a lot of opportunity for this to be an economic driver for the city, job creation, and then when it comes to the actual aircraft operations, we will have maintenance folks, we will have scheduling folks, we have people that will be assisting in the day-to-day operations, and then, of course, the pilots themselves have a great opportunity to maybe not fit in the mold of being a traditional pilot and being on the road all the time. Because this is a local, short trips, it's an opportunity to stay local, so I do anticipate a lot of the pilot jobs will be folks that live in Huntington Beach and Orange County.
We've talked before, and I've asked, you know, plenty of questions in our meetings. I just have just a couple, I wrote down a few, I'm not going to ask you all of them, I promise. Are the, and some of these questions came from other, say, aviation experts that know we're looking at this, and so I'll just, I'm just going to go through a couple of them. Are these aircraft FAA-approved for flight testing at this point?
So our aircraft is in the final stages of FAA certification. There's an extremely high level of safety equal to a commercial airline, and so we have been going through this process with the FAA, and I anticipate that wrapping up within the confines of this three-year program.
Yeah, and just one thing to add to that, we are currently flying regularly and testing the aircraft at Salinas Airport in Northern California, so there is currently in operation, and there's other competitors or other companies are also in operation, but we are currently in that level.
Okay. And will the pilots be certified Part 135, FAA Part 135?
I'll let the pilot take that question.
Yeah, so actually, they will be certified pilots. Interestingly enough, last year, there was a really huge piece of policy that went through that created its own category, which is the first time that's happened in over 60 years, particular to our industry, and so those pilots will now be able to get the specific certification that's catered to the specific aircraft. So it's actually a new, exciting thing to share with youth as well, for more opportunity in aviation.
Good, I look forward to hearing that. Can you just real briefly talk about the redundancy and emergency systems, just in case the props quit turning?
Yeah, and safety is really critical to everything that we do, incredibly high bar of safety in every design and every thought process in this entire, you know, aviation history being rich, and we want to maintain that in the United States, of course. So our engineers have also thought through the redundancies. We obviously look to aircraft or helicopters and what issues they have, because this is a low-level flying environment. A helicopter, as we know, has a single point of failure with one single rotor, so as you can see on our aircraft, we have multiple rotors. If in the case, which is extremely unlikely, that one of the rotor or multiple rotors did fail, engineering-wise, and the counter rotor would counteract that failure, so that it would be stable to fly, and then if there was absolutely everything that failed, you can still have an emergency landing as a pilot would do and be trained for in a regular aircraft.
So can this, can this aircraft glide like a regular fixed-wing aircraft?
Yes, it absolutely can.
That's good. How many, how many passengers did you say this will hold, a pilot, and you say four passengers?
Yes, four passengers and a pilot.
And some cargo, but there's a range of weight that we're debating, that we're working on and sort of working that engineering, but sort of what is that capacity and payload, but estimating around, you know, four passengers plus small light luggage would be the capacity.
This one, this next question's very important to me. Do they have air conditioning?
That's a very good question, and yes, we will absolutely have air conditioning. Some of our competitors, there's a whole debate on their air conditioning system, and so we have taken, you know, note of that, and there will be air conditioning.
Okay. Because we're, you know, in a coastal environment here, we'd get, have, from time to time, we have fog, and sometimes we don't know the fog's coming. I mean, some, if you've been around enough, you can be here in Huntington Beach, and it's a beautiful, beautiful day, and you look out and there's a big fog bank coming, and maybe or maybe not, the pilot doesn't know he's going to fly to Huntington Beach and land with four passengers, and all of a sudden, the fog rolls in. Are they going to be certified for IMC, you know, meteorological, instrument meteorological conditions?
Yes, absolutely, and I have been in that situation, flying, you know, private aviation in the area, and I've experienced that, and it does, I think it's really important that we will have that capability, and additionally, we will have ADS-B, which is a huge safety piece that on the federal level has been a really big, important piece with some legislation right now. So again, safety being really a critical part of everything we're doing.
Got some of these guys, people give me lots and lots of questions, but I'm not going to take them all. How long does it take to charge the craft?
So because, like George was saying, the, so the whole idea behind the founder of the company and the idea of what we're trying to do is give people back their time and to get to places faster than sitting in traffic, I don't know anybody that enjoys that environment. And so it is short hops and short trips, of course, as the first initial use cases in environments that are densely populated. So with that, the actual aircraft will, will charge in between having these short hops. So we anticipate for, you know, a short 10- to 15-minute flight, it would be like a five-to-10-minute charging approximately, and then at the end of the night, we would fully charge the aircraft at a location within one of the cities that we operate.
Just like your cell phone.
Yes, exactly.
One more question, and that's it. Are you going to, have you coordinated, have you thought about coordinating with ground transportation companies like Uber Lyft, Yellow Taxi, whatever, because you might be taking a person to, you know, John Wayne to the heliport, or the, whatever we're going to call it here in Huntington Beach, and then they may, you know, they got to get somewhere from there, and so there should be coordination, ground coordination, so I'm guessing you guys have already thought of that?
Yep. That's what makes some of the facilities and exploring sort of existing parking facilities, you know, and partnerships as well, make it unique because of that ability to partner up with either a rideshare service or with a city, right, where you already have an existing depot or a facility that people are parking at, and then maybe that could be utilized as this service gets added on.
I said circuit, that's it.
It's good to see you in person. Thank you for the presentation. So I had a couple of questions I forgot to ask. The aircraft, when it needs to be charged, would you guys, if, let's say, for example, you guys are, I don't know, using, you're somewhere by our heliport, and there's no infrastructure, there, we don't have chargers, would that be something that you guys would be fully responsible of covering the cost?
Yeah, so I'm happy to take that. It's a great question. We anticipate that with our partners within the airport environment, we call them FBOs, which is where you get, you know, traditional aviation gets fuel, and we would get charging, that would be the situation that would be, we would be paying for that. There's still some things to be determined, but it would not be anything that would be required from the city for the charging.
Yeah, and just as, and thinking of it as, it's no different than existing aircraft or a helicopter that operates within the city's jurisdictions, how they enter and leave and their partnerships with FBOs, I think ultimately that's the same kind of service you can initially anticipate, and so you can imagine where there's an existing helipad that maybe has not been updated, we would come in and work with a partner that we're saying, all right, well, let's look at electrification upgrade, because maybe the whole building needs electrification upgrades, and how does this complement that service? Or if there's an FBO at an existing airport, they're already doing a redevelopment, let's work with them to decide, okay, how far are you going to draw the conduit? We're not going to have the charging, let's say, for another six months, a year, but at least put that in your airport master layout plan, like we're working with different airports to do that, et cetera. So there's really different permutations where we bring in that service and then develop how that advancement can work.
Okay, and would there be like any cost-sharing opportunities with the city partnership?
That would be the idea, sort of like, do we develop the infrastructure ourselves, and then, or do you maybe do an investment that we're either co-investing and then we pay landing fees, right, so that we're working down the cost of that investment over the course of three to five years? So there's different models that we can develop for whatever the asset is and whatever the resource we want to structure. So whether we come to the table, but yeah, I think ultimately the goal here is there shouldn't be a burden on the city, the idea is the city can reimagine its existing infrastructure to then bring in this service. So if you have an empty rooftop parking lot, you have an empty roof deck, and you want to explore how you can reutilize that and re-permit it within these existing rules, that's what this program allows, because the rules may not articulate exactly what zone should have this type of vertiport, you know, in the city rules or in the city code, but this program will help us accelerate that.
And just to add to that, I think it's really important that this aircraft does not require runway, because it's vertical takeoff and landing, so it opens up the doors in the future to not just operate to and from an airport, and that also helps with community folks that may not live around an airport to have the opportunity to take advantage of a service like we would provide.
Okay, and are you guys looking into something like the Uber app, where I can just pick up my phone, say I'd like an aircraft, and then call you guys right up?
Yeah, we are. It will be a very seamless experience to do that, and it will, you know, populate the local airport or vertiport, and then you would go to that and then continue on your short journey and get to where you actually want to be and enjoy your time.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, we're just listening to the study session, and in the next few weeks, we're going to be talking about expanding our partnership into the feasibility of really putting this into practice and gaining those contracts or whatever through the application process. There is no money involved, it's just looking into the feasibility of the program expanding, right?
Exactly, correct.
All right, Don.
Hello, nice to meet you. Thanks for the presentation. Couple of questions, just the first one is kind of twofold, so I know we have a short deadline here, December 11th, it looks like, for submissions, so what does it take to submit, and what happens if, well, let's start there, what does it take to submit?
Sure. So the process would be to partner with the city, the city would be the actual lead in this application, and then we would be supportive. We also have done due diligence for other folks in Orange County, such as airports, college institutions, and other things that we think could be a potential use case that would be beneficial to Huntington Beach and to the operation in Orange County. So bringing all of those folks to the table, and then, you know, writing up this actual requirements of the submission by December 11th, but the city would be the lead in that effort.
Okay, so there's a lot of moving parts. What would happen if we, we have an interest as a city, but we just can't get to the point where we're able to meet our requirement or responsibility? What happens if you miss this first deadline?
So if we did miss the deadline, we would miss the opportunity to be part of
So if we did miss the deadline, we would miss the opportunity to be part of the application process.
Forever?
Yes, forever. So I think, you know, that's why we've done a lot of the legwork so that we can make sure that it's seamless. We are, you know, in conversations in other parts of the country as well. So there's a lot to learn and compare to and then bring all of that to this process in Huntington Beach.
Okay. And so when you talk about the scope, what do you foresee in regards to, does that include hangars or how many heliports and how many vehicles do you see initially?
Sure.
I think the famous phrases, yeah, I think the famous phrase is this will be a crawl, walk, run. Ultimately, it's up to us how expansive we would like this project to be. I think our goal is to say we want to explore all of those and see what potential opportunities there are to do a facility for a takeoff and landing, to find a facility possibly for a depot. But ultimately, I think operations would be the goal. And with the goal of connecting also to the Olympics, I think in terms of timeline, I think that's something important to think about is the administration announced this program September 17th or 14th for a deadline due December 11th. They are literally moving at light speed or airspeed, I'm not sure which one, but they are trying to get applications in immediately so that by next summer, they can be ready to start exploring because they recognize that these programs are going to mold. Some cities' projects may modify and say, oh, we're going to look at this airport, now we're going to look at a helipad. I think it's, we need to be flexible to some degree, but I think it's up to us how complex we want to make the application. I think for us, the goal is exploring broadly an opportunity to find a location for these to operate within the city and connecting us to the network that exists, whether it's the Santa Ana Airport or existing helipad networks across Southern California to do that before the Olympic Games.
And my last question, I think some of my council members have questions as well. So as a city, what would be our initial responsibility in order to help you guys achieve your goal? What, what is expected from the city if we take the lead position?
I, I think one is to say that we, we're going to enter into an agreement together, that we're going to submit this application and then we're going to work in good faith that we'll get all the data, you know, feasibility, infrastructure, all the necessary studies and work, but coordinate with you in terms of, we're not going to go out there and just say, we're landing right here on the beach. You know, it's, it's work with the city and identify what are those potential sites? And then narrow that list down to submit with the application and then present that.
And, and what would be the minimum requirement? Like if, if we were able to say we were ready to take the lead position and let's talk about one site and one aircraft, is that enough to get you guys in the game?
A hundred percent. And that's our goal is to find one place and one plane to land and then that you will be the leader in the nation if we get to showcase that next year.
And if I may add, the whole idea is beyond this program. So we are invested in Huntington Beach with our footprint and we want to obviously put more roots in Huntington Beach and make this program great for the three years, but then beyond that have existing infrastructure. And then obviously all of the, the community piece, working with universities, trying to grow things. So it's definitely not just the, the three-year program for us. And I think other folks that are doing it in cities that they don't have roots in may have the ability to just operate in those three years. It's more than that for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, you touched on it, but you already have a shop here in Huntington Beach, right? You're already manufacturing part of this craft here.
Yeah, this is, and I think that's, that was Melissa's point is that no matter, regardless of this program, we're here. So this is also an introduction to us as, as your citizens, as your tenants. You know, we have currently a couple dozen employees, the contractor, I think, just started blasting some walls, I don't make sure they got the permits and all that done, but they, they've started doing two to $3 million in renovation and upgrades. So we're here. I think the question is beyond that workforce. And I think to Councilman Williams' question, I think the workforce has already started, the handful of folks we have working there now at the facility. We hope to grow that to be several dozen. We hope to grow that facility and that's going to be making the composites and the R and D work for this aircraft. So that's going to stay here regardless of this federal program. The question is with this program, can we then, uh, uh, speed up other opportunities and development?
All right, Andrew.
Um, I'll try and be quick here and wrap some of this up with some core questions and core points. So I think it's important to kind of lay down the, the foundation here. So as you mentioned, really the Trump administration or the current administration looked at other countries and they said, look, you know, some of these other countries are kind of eating our lunch, if you will, when it comes to this emerging technology, but we've got the brains and we've got the know-how here in the United States. And he said, we want these, this application process to establish a means by which we can kind of let the rubber hit the road and determine what we need to do or not do in regards to regulation and permitting as we move this technology and advance it forward, correct? And the pilot program itself is for you to get together with the city and say, okay, how are we going to establish the flight, you know, the flight zones and the path? How, what else are we going to need in regards to local city permitting? And then from there, as you establish that footprint between us, Los Angeles, John Wayne, then it gives us a broader scope as to how this would work on a national basis. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And there is no investment necessary on the part of Huntington Beach in terms of money. You will, you guys are covering all of those costs, correct?
Brain power.
Excellent. And then also for people who are watching this and thinking to themselves like, oh my gosh, it's going to be the Jetsons in here within three years. This is a longer timeline. Over the next two or three years, you, it's really like a couple, a couple of aircrafts, correct?
Yes, it will, and George mentioned crawl, walk, run, fly. But it will be, we will not be flooding the skies with several aircraft. It will definitely be a gradual thing over, you know, the course of time.
And then, so looking ahead at the Olympics, it would be to showcase the paths, the way in which these operate, kind of the, the entire relationship with local communities and obviously the effective nature of your product.
So by the time we get to the Olympics, I would anticipate that we would have a certified aircraft. So that would enable us to carry passengers and athletes. So of course that will all be figured out and based on the FAA certification, but we are on the path to do so.
And that's the goal. And then as Huntington Beach being the lead on this and the partner with you, I mean, we're really putting ourself forward as being an incredibly forward-thinking community. And they targeted, and you even mentioned in our previous conversations, you targeted Huntington Beach because of the fact that we're so business friendly and you, and you feel as if we are the right partner based on how attractive we are as a city, correct?
Yes. And to add to that, our composite shop, it really does require very specialized folks. It's high-paying jobs, very technical jobs, a very important piece of our aircraft. And that talent is here in Huntington Beach and Orange County.
And then in terms of one of the questions that I know that we will get from residents, you know, there's obviously a lot of concern about the noise, especially downtown, you know, we don't want the locals raging down there about the helicopters. So the difference in the noise, I just want to reiterate what you had mentioned. I mean, this is virtually silent in comparison, right?
Yes, that's correct. So it is a hundred times quieter than a helicopter and the actual profile of sound of a helicopter is more of a whipping sound. And then this, our aircraft, the sound is a swooshing and it does really blend in and is almost inaudible at altitude. And so it blends in with the environment.
Okay. So you, you firmly believe this sound would not, sound is not an issue?
No, absolutely not. And I think the things that historically have been a major concern for communities around airports are noise, safety and emissions. And those are all mitigated with our design and our aircraft.
Okay. And then you mentioned that we would know if we were accepted as a partner city or as a lead on this application process by March?
Yes, that is the goal if the government opens back up and we have everything on track. But that is the goal, is March.
Great. All my questions, thank you.
Case.
Thank you, guys. Just, so I know you're under a tight timeline, so what are next steps from here?
So next steps would be for us to come back and, you know, hear your feedback from the study session. And then we would be drafting the actual RFP in, in partnership with the city. And then we would bring the other entities in Orange County, the airports, the colleges and other interesting parties to the table. And then we would all coordinate on that submission on the 11th.
Okay. So the, the finer details will then come back and allow us to review and then obviously vote on to be the lead, I guess, submit the letter of intent with you guys, right, to the, to the federal government?
Yes.
I'm really interested in obviously, of course, the program, but the infrastructure. Are you guys expecting like exclusive rights as like the carrier? Should, should we get awarded this, I guess, this, this RFP or this, this, what's it called? Like the funds or the program, I guess? Huntington Beach, are you guys expecting to be like the exclusive carrier? Can we, because this is like an emerging technology, of course. So I'd imagine there'll be future or other carriers, you know, potentially helicopters that could utilize, you know, additional landing pads. So there's been a desire, you know, from other aviators as well. So I just want to see, kind of put that on the table if that's what you guys are looking for.
Yeah, I think that's the goal is to, to develop an exclusive relationship initially until we get up and running because you want to build the trust and we have the whole ecosystem, right? So we would manage, we're training the pilots, we're actually doing the maintenance, we're actually renting, so you'll have the entire control within one entity and one company. So I think that would be the goal is to maintain that exclusive relationship. And then as the technology grows or evolves, five, 10 years from now, we can reevaluate. But I think for, in terms of the city's priorities, I think that would be helpful to manage and similar to rideshare, right? You don't want it all showing up necessarily all at once until the city evaluates how it implements it in this program.
Okay, so if we build like new, you know, call it landing pads or utilize existing facilities for new landing pads, are you guys looking for exclusive rights to those landing pads or is that something that we can maybe talk about later and negotiate?
So I see that this program itself will be kind of an incubator to prove things out and accelerate the FAA certification and all the things that we need to get the data and the infrastructure. And then long-term, I do think that people will look to the city and say, wow, look at the awesome stuff they've done. This is a perfect environment for us to operate in. And of course, that will create other folks that will want to come and operate in the cities that have these programs and which will be five of them. So I do think it could be a real economic driver and eventually there will drive competition in, within the program, you know, would be Archer specific and the city. But then beyond the program, I do think long-term it will attract folks to the Huntington Beach and Orange County.
Okay. I mean, I guess we'll talk, have an opportunity to talk further, but that's what I envision. The infrastructure piece where obviously you guys have maybe initially exclusive rights as we build it out and proof of concept, but event, you know, then it's like essentially we're building our own, you know, heliport, airport in the city. So we want to open up to other carriers to also utilize it as this technology emerges. And then what about like the, the charging technology? So I know you touched on it, but I mean, can you really charge that fast, like, like a supercharger? And then, you know, where would you put those charging facilities?
You're asking all the exact questions we're hoping to tackle in the study in terms of, so if we bring a charger and we install a charger, let's say it's not being utilized because we're having the aircraft as a depot after sunset or whatever, and for those six hours, you want to use it as a vehicle charger, is that possible, right? So the city can then generate revenue and all those exact questions. Let's say the city, if we're doing it Santa Ana, uh, Santa Ana Airport and the airport decides to build on their roof deck, right? That's the airport federally granted, fairly obligated, they might have to allow everyone to land there. And now not just us, but anybody that has one of these toys shows up, right? So how do you manage that within your conditional use permits to regulate and make sure that not, not every Joe, you know, shows up over there, right? So these are all the exact right questions you're asking in terms of how we design the program and then tackle that to present to the federal government.
Okay, good. Yeah, because that's for me, that's where I'm really focused on is the physical infrastructure. Like I'm in commercial real estate and some of the projects we build have these non-Tesla supercharging, you know, like Rove and some of these other groups that are coming forward to charge all other electric cars. And they put in so much money and to bring in that much power, that if you guys are through this, this grant funding, this program, able to put in that infrastructure, we would like to be able, of course, to use it not just for you guys, but for vehicles or other electric, you know, I guess EVs in general, whether it's aircraft or cars. So the exclusivity is just, is going to be something I'm going to like, you know, have my ears perked up a little bit about, but if we're building this infrastructure, we should be able to, be allowed to use it, you know, as needed or for other uses and things like that. So, cool, that's it. Thank you.
Ah, butch. Well, actually I got two or three.
He only has one page more of questions.
You said before that the, the proposals are due in December and that a decision's going to be made in March. And did I hear you say that, that the, the Department of Transportation is going, going to award multiple, like up to five contracts to companies just like Archer to continue the, the research, you know, for the best, you know, for the best vehicle, I guess? Is that correct?
Yes.
Do, is there room in this industry, you think, right now or in the, in the, in the immediate future for multiple e-tall, eVTOL aircraft, you know, different companies? Is, is, is the market going to be big enough, you believe?
I, I think so. I, I'll say as looking at the Southern California market, because of the unique specs of this aircraft, we're looking at as a rideshare, as an air taxi rideshare. There are folks that are looking, Boeing's looking at autonomy, so they've got a 10-year timeline. There are folks that are looking at just cargo, they just want to pick up cargo. There are folks that are looking, they have the electric aircraft, they're not going to do the vertical, they want a shorter runway, so maybe they're going to look at Fullerton or some other airports. So the, the unique specs of all these various technologies really provides a broad spectrum of business opportunity.
So I, this, the reason I came back with a couple of extra questions was, was based on some of the questions that Casey was asking about exclusivity. It would seem to me that there is a, there's some economy of scale to be had if you were to say, I don't want to say partner, but you know, have a, an agreement with other potential operators in the eVTOL industry when it comes to building heliports, you know, or landing pads or things like that, so that Archer doesn't have to go out and, and spend their cap, all their capital. Seems to me like you might get together with some of the other, other manufacturers or successful bidders because there would be economies there if you guys split the, split the, the, the cost of, of building that infrastructure. Anyway, that's just a comment, it's not, you know, you don't have to say, hey, that's a great idea, I think we'll take that back to the, the boardroom. Thank you guys very much. All right. Hopefully this is the last question. Dawn.
I just have one last question. With this, as you said, almost quasi-drone, what is the air ceiling height? You know, the, the airways are so regulated, so there's, capacity's going to be based on where you fly and how many the FAA is going to say are allowed in that airspace at one time. What is the height? You said you fly at about 1,500 feet. Is that the ceiling? What do you see for, for the flight path?
Let the pilot answer this one again.
Happy to talk to that and answer the question. So the, because we are doing short duration trips, we will be at lower altitudes. And like you mentioned, probably between 1,500 feet to 2,000, 2,500. That would be kind of an optimal altitude environment for these, you know, short duration trips. And as far as the airspace goes, very, very good question and very dialed into the larger national conversation going on right now for a revamp of, of the air traffic control system. We, because we are piloted, are able to operate when we are certified in the current system as we are today, if that's what we move forward doing with. So we could seamlessly integrate our operations and aircraft into the national airspace system as it exists today with the current routes, the helicopter routes. And it wouldn't be an additional burden on air traffic control. So we would just incorporate into the current system of what's there today. Of course, as they're, you know, looking at what needs to be fixed in future operations in the NAS, it will be interesting to see how that incorporates the new technologies. But that is more with like autonomy and unpiloted aircraft. So we do not, as a piloted aircraft, need any restrictions or corridors or zoning that's specific to our operation.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, appreciate the study session. Thank you, very informative.
Thank you.
All right. All right, City Managers' Report.
Yes, our City Treasurer has an update on our financial literacy classes.
This one will be super fast. So we've had 22 people sign up to date and we're actually expanding the classes to be able to do them via Zoom, thanks to the United Way being generous enough to do it. So we will be putting out to the public the Zoom address that people can use to, to go ahead and do it. We still encourage people to try to attend in person because the Fair Housing Foundation one-on-one counseling can only be done for folks who are going to be there in person. So just as a heads up on that one. But overall, we've gotten much better turnout than we expected already and we're still eight days out. Again, first session will be Wednesday, next Wednesday, then November the 12th at 6:30.
Jason, where do they, they want to sign up? Where do they go? City website?
It's on the front page.
Front page, city website, financial literacy.
All right, that it? Jab?
Yes, that's it.
All right. Consent calendar, five's been pulled, so anybody want to pull four, six, seven, eight One quick, quick. All right.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve four, six, eight and nine.
Second.
City Clerk?
Councilman Twiney?
Yay.
Councilwoman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Items number four, six, eight and nine, pass 7-0.
All right. Councilman McKennedy, please go.
The only reason I pulled seven was, you know, I'm familiar with what it's all about, but when you read the agenda, you see that we're approving a payment of 722,000, almost 723. A resident may not dig deeper into the attachments or the PowerPoint, so I just thought maybe the chief would be able to come up here and really, just in a short summary, tell us, those who don't know, the benefit of the CalOptima plan and why it's important to spend the 722 and what we get in return.
So the, the VRRP program, it's a voluntary program that we have with CalOptima who manages the Medicare process for the, for Orange County. And basically, it's an intergovernmental transfer program that allows CalOptima, DHCS and the city to draw additional Medicare funds to fill that gap. And so that gap is what is the cost for service and what we get reimbursed by, by Medi-Cal. And so we're going to-
Oh, sorry, Chief.
So we're going to put in the 700,000 and we'll get about 1.7 back from CalOptima.
And that's great news and that's the news that I wanted our residents to understand. It's just not payment out, it's payment with return and it's a great program. Thank you, Chief. On that note, I, I make a motion to move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
All right. We'll move on to number 10, approved for introduction ordinance number 4343, adopting the 2025 Model California Construction Codes and schedule a public hearing for December 16th, 2025. Staff, please introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a joint item with the Community Development and Fire Departments. And I'll introduce Janice Van Mullen, our Fire Marshal, she'll give the presentation. We also have Jasmine Daly, our Building Official, here to answer questions as well. And before Jasmine, Janice starts the presentation, I did want to know on the recommended action that the recommended action is actually to approve for introduction ordinance number 4343 and repeal ordinance numbers 4268 and 4270. So, and that is also, that's accurately reflected in attachment number one, but any motion for the recommended action should include the language to repeal ordinance 4268, 4270, which are the old codes. With that, I'll turn it over to our Fire Marshal.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman and Councilwoman. My name's Janice Van Mullen, I am the Fire Marshal for the city and I'm here this evening alongside Chief McCoy representing our fire department and as well as Jasmine Daly, who's the Building Official, and Jennifer Villa Senor, representing Community Development Department. We're here to present an overview of the triennial adoption of the Title 24, the 2025 California Building Standard Codes. Tonight's presentation will cover an overview of the code adoption process, the steps required to develop local amendments, our implementation plan and timeline, recommendations from both fire and community development departments. First, I will provide some background on the building code adoption process. All occupancies in California are subject to the California Building Standards Code. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission publishes new editions of Title 24 Building Standard Codes. The new editions of Title 24, the new editions of Title 24 Building Standards Codes are minimum mandated standards and cities are authorized to adopt local amendments to address unique local conditions. In addition to building standards, there are administrative provisions which are not considered building standards and they may also be adopted locally without a need to justify the local conditions. So how do we get from the model building codes to the Huntington Beach building codes that are found currently in the Title 17 of our municipal code? Our state building codes are based on national model codes. We are based on the International Code Councils, what they call the I-Codes for building residential fire and, and a few more. The NFPA for electrical code and IAPMO for plumbing and mechanical. These model codes undergo a very rigorous consensus process and they do update these every three years. So the, the California Standards Commission, in collaboration with various state agencies and advisory committees, adopts and publishes the final version. It's known as Title 24, which was released on July 1, 2025. Okay, I, I'll next discuss the, what our Huntington Beach recommend, recommendations are. So the Fire and Community Development Department reviewed the new codes that came out to determine which existing building, which existing Huntington Beach amendments should be retained from the previous code cycle and which amendments should be removed and whether any new amendments are needed. So dev, I'm sorry. Community Development is recommending that all previously locally adopted amendments to be carried forward without changes. And the Fire Department is recommending the removal of two local amendments, the addition of one new amendment and the continuation of all others from the previous cycle. I'm sorry, I meant two local, added two local amendments. The local amendments we added for the fire code are, we added a new section for valet trash. Now why, what is valet trash? It's when they, you put your trash in a hallway, that's a protected hallway. And so the International Code Council created a new allowance to put trash in a hallway, in a rated hallway. And as long as they followed certain provisions. Well, we don't have those guidelines, so we are adopting the, what they have, the International Code has on, on recommendations on how to run a, a valet trash program. And we also added a new local amendment on fire hydrant supply connections. And this amendment prohibits a wat, underground water supply line with a single connection to the municipal, municipal main to supply both fire hydrants and fire suppression systems. So we don't want the fire hydrants impacting the sprinkler operation. And new this year is the, the California Wildland Urban Interface Code. So the, what, the California Wildland Interface Code, also known as the WUI Code, it establishes the building requirements for residential structures located in designated fire hazard severity zones. Earlier this year, CalFire identified a high fires, high fires hazard severity zone in Huntington Beach. And it was in the Bolsachico Wetlands area and it extended up into the residential and across the street of, on Warner. The map was adopted earlier this year, June 17th, and we are not proposing any local amendments for the I-WUI Code or the California WUI Code. So our implementation plan is to ensure transparency and community awareness. We will be, both departments will be updating, distributing information in the form of printed documents, documents available for download on our website. We will update internal and public-facing checklists for designers and builders, publish adopted muni-codes on the, on the website. So our recommendations, oh, I'm sorry. The new codes will take effect 30 days after the second reading and public hearing. So currently, that's scheduled for December 16th. So our recommendation is that we, that we recommend city council repeal the previous ordinance and then adopt the new ordinance incorporating the 2025 California Building Standard Codes and the proposed local amendments. And that it, that concludes the presentations and we're here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Andrew.
Um, I'll try and keep this brief. I have a problem with Title 24. Having opened restaurants in 17 different states, California is the most difficult and pretty much double the cost of any other state because of Title 24 to some degree. We, this, this, every single project has to meet the Title 24 compliance report, correct? So, so really, these codes that get updated every three years, we, we don't have any control over this. We have to implement this, right?
You're correct.
So we, really, we, you guys just administratively kind of stitched this into our local ordinance and then we just update it to be in compliance with the state.
Correct. We take any local amendments based on our local conditions and we can add them. An example is we have something in the fire code on parades because we have the big Fourth of July parade.
Got it, got it. Okay, I just want to make that clear. So when people come to Huntington Beach, we are strictly within the framework of what the state requires and we do everything possible to try and make it as easy as possible for people to build, open new businesses, restaurants, retail, et cetera. But we are doing this in order to maintain compliance with Title 24 with the state.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, anybody else? All right. I'll move as recommended with the repeal of ordinance numbers 4268 and 4270.
Second.
Is that correct, Jen? Yeah, okay. City Clerk?
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0 and I'd like to read for the ordinance title for the record, ordinance number 4343, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending the Huntington Beach Municipal Code Title 17, Buildings and Construction by Reference and Repeal, ordinance numbers 4268 and 4270.
Maybe one. All right, thank you. Number 11. Approved for introduction, ordinance number 4344, amending Huntington Beach Municipal Code Section 10.84 Bicycle Regulations. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Toby Archer will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. In an effort to address the ongoing proliferation of e-bikes in our community, staff continues to develop ways to address citizen concerns with respect to riders' behavior and the safety of the public. One of the many things we've done is look at our existing legislation to see where improvements can be made. Recently, in the past three years, we adopted Huntington Beach Municipal Code 10.84 and some of the recommendations are to add additional verbiage to Section 10.84 to include the following additions listed in ordinance 4344. Most of the recommendations grant broader enforcement opportunities for riders operating dangerously on sidewalks where pedestrians are present and in business districts. We have been on the forefront of addressing e-bike concerns in the state of California. We have had officers and sergeants teach at the Office of Traffic Safety conferences. We've been approached by multiple different agencies, local agencies, for our programs in regards to schools, enforcement, hands-on training. We're working with all the school districts in the city to provide now hands-on training. We've already done video training and testing so that they can get certified to be there. But we are also now starting a collateral assignment for us to do more aggressive enforcement for those that are not responding to some of that training. So this gives us a little bit more ability to enforce some of the complaints that we've been getting are riders riding dangerously on sidewalks in business districts such as Main Street during the street fair and some other events and on sidewalks when pedestrians are present. There is one change that just like to, to address that Section 10.84.160 subsection D should actually just be listed as under 10.84.160A4. Nothing is changing other than where it's placed just because it was a typo that got moved down to subsection D when it should be subsection A4. If there was any questions on that, I'm happy to address those.
So just a little clarification on that, because that's under a subsection that discusses, I'm sorry, no. So just to clarify though, that, that D section, upon a sidewalk within any business district or upon the sidewalk adjacent to any public school building, church, recreation center, playground, or over any pedestrian crossing or with any crosswalk. So does that make allowances for the kids to be able to ride their bicycles adjacent to the schools if they're riding to school or is that where it drops into a different section?
Yeah, kind of the opposite of that. So it, it will fall under subsection A. That, that should be, if you just imagine if there was a number four, it would read no person shall operate a bicycle or electric bicycle upon a sidewalk within a business district, so on and so forth. So that gives us the ability to enforce when someone is doing that. It's not because we don't want them riding their, their bike necessarily next to a school, it's just that during school times, that's when we see the most amount of pedestrians on those sidewalks. And so it gives us another enforcement tool to say they can't be riding on a sidewalk within any business districts such as Main Street or, or Walnut or adjacent to any school building. So we want them to be in a bike lane when there's a bike lane appropriate or if it's adjacent to a school building, we want them to walk because that's where all the pedestrians are coming out, if that makes sense.
A quick question. So I highly doubt that all the kids riding e-bikes are going to be reading all the code and understanding the ordinances. How are you going to communicate this to them? Just wait, just give them a warning and kind of establish that baseline or?
Yeah, so we actually, part of our education campaign is when children are registering for school, we have an e-bike pamphlet that we promulgate out to all the school districts. So at registration, that gets sent out to all students in all the districts. We also have that hands-on training that we're starting to do for some of the younger school students. If they want to park their bike on campus, they have to go through the training program. We'll include that in that, include this new information in that, but we'll also do, you know, social media blast to make sure that it's, it's messaged out to the community as well.
And I think it's important to mention that because we get a ton of emails every single day about the e-bikes and what are you guys doing about it? I had a long conversation with Sergeant Thomas, who, who's obviously knows every little detail. And he was explaining to me, which is important for the public to hear, is that all the kids who now are going to school, they have to get essentially a sticker or, you know, quasi license or just the sticker to be able to ride the bikes and park the bikes at school. And in order to get that sticker, they have to go through all of these safety classes. So there really is a, a very structured framework of safety and education that they have to go through in order to be able to ride the bikes to and from school, which is where we see the majority of the usage. So that's helping.
Yeah, if they want to park their bike on school campus, they have to go through to get that. And then that's, we've been able to push that off on the school to enforce that. So they have to have that sticker on their bike if they want to park it on school property.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'll move the item as recommended.
Second.
All right, City Clerk?
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0 and I'd like to read for the ordinance title for the record, ordinance number 4344, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending Chapter 10.84 of the- Chapter 10.84 of the Huntington Beach Municipal Code relating to bicycle regulations.
All right, move on to number 12. Councilmember item submitted by Councilman Butch, Andrew, and Chad, pedestrian and bike safety. Who's taking this?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read the issue statement first.
You've got a lot to say, you go.
Okay, thank you. Keeping cyclists and pedestrians safe on busy roads like PCH is about more than just traffic management. It's about protecting lives and accessibility for everyone that makes this stretch of the coast special. Every day, locals and visitors use PCH to walk, run, and bike. But the same qualities that make it iconic, its popularity and access along coastal towns, also make it very dangerous for people traveling outside of cars. By working together to improve visibility, calm traffic, and build safer spaces for everyone, we can create a corridor where drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians coexist. In June, Public Works applied for the Safe Routes to School Grant, targeting the Pacific Coast Highway and Beach Boulevard Safety Action Plan. In 2027, the city hopes to receive those funds totaling more than $600,000. Every October, the HBPD promotes National Pedestrian Safety Month, provided by a grant from the California Office of Traffic Safety through the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. HP, HBPD reminds drivers to always take extra precautions to help protect pedestrians and offer driving safety tips. As part of the upcoming Caltrans project, PCH from Bolsochica to Beach Boulevard will see improvements. Caltrans will formalize the bike lanes and add buffer zones between the bike lane and the travel lanes from the Santa Ana River to Beach. Those efforts and continued support and planning represent meaningful steps toward a safer, more connected coastal community. Now, I, myself and Councilman Gruel and Williams brought this forward, and I've gotten some email and some feedback from, from citizens that say that there's, there's more dangerous roads in, in Huntington Beach than PCH and Beach, and even contends that nobody ever rides their bicycles on PCH or Beach Boulevard. I've seen different, I've witnessed different. The reason that we picked for this, for this H item, and we picked PCH was because someone very close to all of us up here had his cousin, he's a, he's a fire captain, marine safety captain, had his cousin hit and killed a couple weeks ago, and I just felt it was incumbent upon me to try to find ways to slow people down and make it safer on PCH. And I believe, you know, that Councilman Gruel and, and Williams feel the same way. I wish we could, we could change the, the speed limit on PCH between Warner and the River Jetty to like 35 miles an hour, but it's a state highway, and we don't have jurisdiction over it to make that, make those changes. What we can do is, is lobby Caltrans and the state to make that corridor, those biking corridors, and I'm especially concentrating right now on, on Pacific Coast Highway, and I am aware that there's other, you know, Brookhurst, Magnolia, Indianapolis, Atlanta, where all the schools are, or throughout the, the city. Those need to be safe too. But I'm, for the, the purpose of this, of this proposal, or this request, I'm concentrating on a, on a safe bike lane along Pacific Coast Highway, and I would love it to go from Bolsochica to the River Jetty. We put Beach Boulevard in here, but we're going to, we're going to push harder for, to make it longer, so. Anyway, that's, that's my presentation.
Newport River Jetty, right? Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, it would seem to be the case that, you know, annually, we have bikers that unfortunately, tragically are, are killed out on, on PCH, and, you know, the recent tragedy, losing, you know, a young man that was a husband and father to young children, it just hits really close to home, and I think that we ought to be doing everything that we can as a city within means to provide for a safe atmosphere for people that are on bicycles, especially in this day and age where, you know, drivers, us as drivers, we're more distracted now than we've probably ever been before, and so we need to look out for them, and certainly for the young people. So, PCH, this would just be really a start. I would like to see a way to try and get into the other arterial roads. I got so much heartache when I see these young kids riding to school, and, you know, they don't have a ride from mom and dad for whatever reasons, circumstances, and, man, I just really worry for them, you know, seeing them out there on the road. I had a little, little heartache about that Subsection D, but I trust that our law enforcers will use their discretion in terms of enforcing that on, on the case, because last thing I want is them out there, you know, in the streets with drivers that are distracted and, and getting hurt. So, full support of this.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Second.
First and a second. Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Last item. Councilmember item submitted by myself, Councilman Kennedy and Williams, real estate, City Real Estate Holdings spreadsheet update. Councilman Kennedy, please bring it forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just quickly read the issue statement, and it kind of summarizes, but first, I'd like to say that there's only three names on this, but this really started with the Fab Four, and there could be seven names on this. This is something that's been near and dear to every council member sitting up here, and that is, you know, improving efficiencies across the board. This happens to be centered around our real estate holdings. So, as the council continues to focus on improving operational processes, staff has been provided guidance from myself and my co-council regarding the ability to bring transparency. One of the monikers that I ran on is transparency for taxpayers and visibility to the city's real estate holdings. We're, we're a city that has close to 110 real estate assets. We have quite a portfolio, and it takes quite a bit to manage the portfolio. So, what I've done with my background in, in real estate and very successful real estate investors is I provided staff, upon meeting with staff, with headers that until we have systems that are automated and talk to one another, as my mentor used to say, GE was run with pencils and papers and files before computers. So, until we have systems in place, what I provided to them, along with Mayor Burns and Councilman Williams, is a roadmap to managing our assets. So, essentially, what, what they're doing is, and they met this suggestion, just for the record, with grace and gratitude, and they were happy I gave them the suggestion. There was zero pushback. So, essentially, when it's all said and done, it's, it's going to be a comprehensive spreadsheet, multiply tabbed, that will give anybody the ability to, well, right now, what they're doing is lining up all the assets in a vertical fashion. Across the top, there's headers that cover everything from property information, leasing information, insurance information, landlord obligations, lesssee information, origination, start dates, expiration dates, rents, type of rents, late fees, just a myriad of management tools that anybody that has one piece of real estate, or 100 pieces of real estate, or more, or anywhere in between, would want to know these things, and this is going to give all the leaders essentially visibility at a glance. They can look at the asset, they'll know when the lease started, when it expires, what the option periods are, what type of lease it is, net lease, gross lease, full service gross, what the landlord opportunities are, or obligations are, what the lesssees obligations are, what insurance obligation, the, the amount of insurance, really, everything that anybody who's managing real estate needs to know. So, until we get a system in place, they have been very diligent putting together this spreadsheet. So, the action item at this point is, I've met with City Manager Hopkins, and we went through the spreadsheet. There's some additional room for improvement, some additional headers that we're going to be placing on there. So, what the action item is, the recommended action is, I'll direct the city manager to set up additional meetings for myself, Mayor Burns, Councilman Williams, with staff, to continue to evaluate and enhance this spreadsheet, and at that point, when we have basically agreed upon a, a final template, then create the fill-in-the-blank across the board and be prepared to come back and present to City Council, kind of what I would call the finished product. And with that said, City Manager, do you have any quick insights?
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. One of the things, all the work that's being done there, I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. Jennifer Viasin, yours, Community Development Team in the Economic Development Division. Steve Holtz, Bill Krill, and Morgan Foster are the City of Huntington Beach staff that's putting all that effort and ensuring that we are managing our assets correctly, receiving the, the rents due, the revenue due, and, and, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that. It's, it's a monumental task. There's a lot of information to fill in. There's a saying that says, "If you don't inspect it, they won't respect it." This is not a gotcha. This is basically giving everybody the tools, and I would like to say, again, starting with the Fab Four and their focus on enhancing operational prowess, they've done a fantastic job with all the business development. The HP3 have come in with, you know, some of the platforms, managing inefficiencies, creating opportunities. We're making great strides. I met with the Finance Commissioner, my Finance Commissioner, and he gave me some great news that virtually every asset is now current on their payments, bar one or two, and unfortunately or fortunately, I can say that wasn't necessarily the case a little while back, and I think some of it was just lack of visibility. And again, when you can inspect it, it becomes more respectable. So, with, with, not the pressure, but with the visibility, we're really tightening up on our, our tenants, and we're really protecting what I believe to be Huntington Beach's most valuable asset, and that is our real estate holdings. So, gratitude to the team, and I appreciate that. So, with that said, Mayor Burns or Councilman Williams, any, any feedback or any commentary?
I'd just like to thank Councilman Kennedy for spearheading the way on this, getting to spend a lot of time together, especially on the campaign trail and on council. You know, we're all gifted in different ways, and one of the things I've really appreciated about you and observed is your ability to take inefficiencies and distill them down into a clear and concise sort of efficiency, and it's certainly something that you're, you're very good at, and so happy that you brought this forward, and, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, my feelings is it's just good business, and that's what we got to do. We got to practice that. We're the financial authority. It's our fiduciary duty as far as representing the citizens and their money, and I'm all for this case.
Now, you know, I love it. I think it's just great, because, like Don touched on it, just creating efficiencies and better systems, and then with our private sector experience, I always talk on it, like, talk about it, our goal is to fuse the private sector and our private sector experience with government, and it's a huge effort to just, to organize all these leases, all these tenants, to, to cure the quote leakage, so that, make sure our, our taxpayers are getting the due rent they're supposed to get, but then also, as new leases come up, we're bringing in, you know, the, the private sector protocol to make them, you know, as they say, like true triple net with zero landlord responsibilities, so the landlord is the city, so again, just protecting the taxpayer, so it's a Herculean effort, and this is a great project, Don, and I'm, I'm really excited to see that end result.
Appreciate that, Casey.
Butch?
I too want to give kudos to Councilman Kennedy and his co-sponsors. This, this is a monumental task. I remember when the three of us first came in, it was something that Councilman Kennedy and I tackled, just trying to find out how many leases we have, what our assets are, and when leases were up, or what the, what the raises, I mean, what the rent increases were going to be, and it was, it wasn't easy to find out. It was, there was a big three-ring binder, and we'd go through the three-ring binder and, and to try to find the property we were looking at for, or the lease we were looking for. And this spreadsheet that, that Councilman Kennedy's come up with and his, and his co-sponsors is fantastic. It's going to make, make our work a lot easier following our city assets. Thank you.
All right, Don?
And to reiterate, everyone up here, I share this with, and I'm really proud of this council for all we're doing. It's incredible, you guys, the leadership you guys are showing across the board, something that I'm proud to be part of, and I hope the residents feel the same way. I'd like to just make a motion to move the recommended item.
Second. With that, please call a roll.
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruel?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
Thank you. Would any council member like to add any new business to the next agenda? Yeah. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Finance and Authority is Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, in the Civic Center Council Chambers, 2000 Main Street, Huntington Beach, California.